Yes. I just, I can't believe how much crap he had. And then this was when he got home, he thought all his patches on account, it's his first. But why, I remember he has no one on his wrist. Oh, anyone know?
I have seen it.
He used to be some part of his family. It, I saw it tonight, it's. So I picked up some clean up at home.
Does anybody remember, uh, at one point there was, someone was talking about it. Emergency, male cyren. Being displaced from where Ravi's used to be.
He laid down.
You know?
He was laying, he was lying on his.
Never heard of that. Exactly, yeah. Hey, how you doing?
Yes, and we can imagine, and and mom.
This is Bill. I'm Bill.
So that they would say.
What, what's Bill?
Something broken for.
Number loss. So I have a bit.
Probably grab that while they were. She was, when they got.
Well, you're tall, what's that?
Right, he's gonna be tossing him a wow, I'm new one.
I've never been.
The hell is that?
Most you're lying about. Oh, I haven't.
Yeah.
Christian. Hey. Couple guys do, I think. New camp.
Oh, I've been sort of.
It's not the most sort of Canadian, but.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Right, it was good, how are you doing? Good. Shopping, okay.
Really big fly squad. We're like mosquitoes like. So I put candles out.
So you don't count them.
Oh, you're me up in the meeting.
She's bad. Happy birthday, right now, because.
Well, the eggs got out of the house.
It's the number one decision.
It's got something, yeah. Doesn't his son been there?
Yeah, I don't know.
But I heard him say so. No, it can't be a lot to do with their already be a guide or, uh, be a.
It's, it's.
Bumper guy.
Pure.
I think it's pure or, uh.
All good.
Yeah.
It's not.
So I mean, where are we? But that's the whole reason.
I need you to be there and finish. So, uh, it was a problem inside when you read it.
Or.
Place.
Four, five, no.
They didn't know his, um, name today. They told my outside. My son.
You're done, you better.
How are you?
Eugene. Don't worry.
Oh, I did want to tell you.
Hey.
It is. I keep seeing your, your minute come up.
Why? He's not going to be sitting.
On the hard.
Maybe somewhere is enough. So she is not here today.
She's not here today? Okay.
I'm here for you.
Well, I think I, uh.
I am.
She beats me with that.
Yeah, John. Talking in with down there.
You did.
Hey, John, give me a book down there.
He's just got that girl.
Birthday from Bridget Hall, is it?
Um, son of heart, that's good way.
Today, yeah.
They call and backlines.
So.
They tell me they sent pictures. My phone's ready to bring.
Yeah, it's birthday.
Yeah. Shouldn't it be fun, it was that fire to go to Valley with lunch. That's what.
Happy birthday.
The bar, it's what?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. We're doing more than now, did that. Actually, we could have looked at one another.
Have you been there before?
Yeah.
I think you're in here. I don't think Jeff's there. Bring candles.
No, we're bar center.
Yeah. And there's a brought by one up here.
Right.
All right.
He's going.
We were in Ireland.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it was great.
That was just like. Oh, yes.
Did you have fun time?
I did. I'm pretty nice.
How do I do that?
This is what I did. I, I wanted to take water with him. Yes.
How do you need to learn to love that?
Right.
How do you need to learn to love that?
It tastes.
You're kind of.
Oh, okay.
It really does.
That's bringing that.
What? Oh, yeah, yeah.
I think we're ready.
I thought you said.
Good job.
Want to do a roll comment, so just.
Where you went.
But I'm supposed to. I tried to. Everything else. Call it.
Thanks for hanging up for you.
Yeah.
Um, one more. Question.
Yeah.
First day, or is it?
It was very looking. It was that.
Oh, the. Or, or. Forget it, it's a stadium. That's a home. There's a light over all, and there's a sign, the jacket lighter. And we think it says that we'll get all these rock ads. Okay. Fortunately, they're quite that level.
Okay, so.
No, but so this is what's been enjoying, and then there's a fifty percent. You know, I usually tell all I want to work, I go to airport, so I expect people to go through around six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
Okay, so I'm like a play.
Feel a bit like that.
Rainshires.
Um, yes. And so I can do, um. He's our. So, we get a, uh, little. But we make a few of them at times, but, uh, it's a, there is a lot of them that, um, so we can carry the first time.
The service. Which you know, just.
It's only if I ask that, so.
Oh, I'm bar one, hi.
Uh.
I mean, I gave.
I read mine.
A thousand dollars.
I mean, right.
I think you're wishing.
Right.
Store.
No.
And I was.
Because.
Just bottom of the.
Everybody, we're at seven thirty-one, completing order, best, we have two weeks.
But we're being asked to apply. Say it's a fair. And three hundred and fifty. One nation, I give that. We have this as well. We play a game of dust and scrub.
I'm, uh, I'd like to welcome, we have deputies for Maureen Weeks here tonight, it's her first night on duty. If you would call and roll, please.
Tasty Adley.
Here.
Tasty Thomas.
Here.
Trusty Schatzberg.
Here.
Trans from wire. And I trusty Canelli.
Here.
Trusty Hoff.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to the civility pledge, I've asked Andy Horn to please read that as he's come back from visiting abroad.
Two hours ago.
Oh, I saw that.
Uh, in interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective.
All right, um, I'm sorry, I skipped ahead of the minutes. Uh, if I could get a motion from the board to approve the minutes of the August fourth, two thousand twenty-five meeting, please.
So.
Second.
Moved by, uh, by Canelli.
Yes.
Seconded by Schatzberger, thank you. Uh, and.
All.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, that was every time this. Any comments, questions, or discussion?
Well, one thing, if I, if I read this correctly, in the, uh, discussion last week regarding, um, the sleepy hollow road, round table discussion?
Under which section?
The minutes.
Okay.
Um, it, it just, it references, um, Kelly Thomas, working with Rhonda, and I think it's myself and Rhonda.
Correct. Uh, was this under the? Oh, discussing yellow road, and yes, that should be Canelli, thank you. Okay, I'll send that to Jen, thank you. Yes, you two will be discussing the trees, and then trustee Schatzberg, and I'll be discussing the lower, Laura. Yeah, of course, okay, thank you. Any other comments, concerns, or questions? All right, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All affirmative, no negative, marking passes, thank you. All right, now back to president's report, thank you, Anne, for the civility pledge. Uh, B of president's report, the legend, for all those that are making submissions, please get those in by Wednesday, August twentieth, and that's at the shlegend at gmail dot com. Uh, under C, market in the hollow update, Christine, thanks for being here.
Yeah.
We've had our third successful market this season, and you noted we had a little bit of a drop off in turnout, so we're gonna try and amp that up in September, so we'd like everybody to help tell your friends and neighbors. In addition, instead of being that second Sunday in September, they've requested, and we don't need to do a motion because it's through the service club, they're gonna have it that first weekend, the seventh?
Yes.
The seventh, uh, which is a Sunday. So it doesn't conflict with the heritage fest, so we can get more people out here, and it's, you know, it's, is that Labor Day week? No, Labor Day is the first.
Correct.
It's perfect, so yeah, we'll have those two weekends, so. September seventh, market in the hollow, folks, tell your friends, it'll be the last one of the season. Um, I just had two notes that I thought of earlier today that I didn't put on the agenda. Uh, we've had a couple of rains and torrential downpours recently, and lots of wind coming in, so one of the projects that I'm working on with trustee Schatzberger for the environmental group, as well as some local residents, is starting to grow a lot of oak trees and starters for residents in the neighborhood, we haven't had it fully formed. But my point being is, if you have had any trees that are damaged in the village, any trees that are particularly older, or that you're concerned about taking down, and you want to start a younger tree to start making, taking its place, please make note of it, reach out to trustee Schatzberger or myself. Uh, we'd like to do an activity in October, it's usually Oak, Oaktober, uh, to help people replace trees, fall is a good time to plant, so that's something we're gonna be working on, we haven't formalized it, but in light of the storms recently, additionally, for those of you who, if you notice that you have any standing water in your swales, out by your culverts, any area in your yard where there's standing water, take note of it, take a picture, that's exactly what we're aiming for with the native rain garden initiative that I've been talking about for a few months. Um, that's an ideal place for these deep rooted plants to go, and we'd like to know if you have any of those areas that'll help get rid of the standing water, get rid of mosquitoes, and kind of help beautify your area, so let us know if you're interested in that. Lastly, um, we were hoping to have a town hall this summer prior to school starting, it looks like we'll be doing it in fall instead. But I did want to mention to people, it's been great seeing everybody out in the summertime, I'm seeing more people out on the streets, runners, walkers, baby carriages, bicyclers. But let's all please try to remember the rules of the road, especially with being pedestrians, we have lots of hills, lots of windy ways. Please do not walk with traffic, it's hard for the cars coming up behind you to let you know that they're approaching, especially now that we have electric vehicles, sometimes you don't hear them at all. Uh, make sure you're facing traffic as you walk, for yourself and your young ones' safety. Uh, if you have headphones in, have that ear that's closest to traffic open, put that headphone behind, or don't put in an earbud, and just make sure that you're paying attention, please. Additionally, drivers will address you at the next meeting, but also play to, pay attention, please. Uh, thank you all. And so clerk's report, Maureen, did you have anything to report?
I do not.
Oh, but welcome. Uh, planning and zoning commissioner report, we do not have Barb tonight, there's no report. Additionally, eight, nine, attorney Schuster and engineer Steele are not here tonight, there are no reports. Director of finance, Eugene.
Requesting approval for the, um, accounts payable in the amount of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-two cents.
Do I have a motion?
So move Diatley.
Second.
Sec, uh, moved by Diatley, seconded by Hoff. Any comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, uh, low call vote, please. Trusty Thomas.
I.
Trusty Schatzberg.
I.
Trusty Nellie.
Aye.
Trusty Hoff.
Let me see, do.
Trusty Diel.
Aye.
All affirmative, no negative, motion passes, thank you. Uh, and next.
And then, uh, you should have it in your packet, we got a letter from the Dundee, um, township park district. It basically says that we've completed our annual summer cons, summer concert series, and wanted to thank the village of Sleepy Hollow for their, uh, partnership over the years of contributing, so that we did this, um, for the second time, and so this is an event that cost the village about six hundred dollars, and those, um, I believe well received, and so, you know, we should, uh, um, make a decision if we want to continue this type of a partnership, or expand on this partnership before the budget season, so we can make sure we can include, um, the funds into the budget for it.
And for our new members, budget season comes up.
Basically, at the end of January, so. Well, early February.
The next four months, we'll be in the dead of winter, won't really be thinking of the summer, but I think this was a really great event that a lot of people turned up for, and has been successful in the past for two years. Um, any, have you guys had a chance to attend, or anybody?
Both of them, and they've been really good.
Yeah.
And the music, the bands have been good too, so.
Chief, any issues with the musical?
Not at all, not at all, other than them trying to get me to climb the rock wall that I. Refuse to do, but yeah, that's it.
Uh, Kyle from public works, any feedback on those events?
No, they, they, everything's clean by the time they leave, so.
Awesome.
Complaints with them.
Yeah, I think it's a great relationship with the park district, and something fun for us to do, so. All right, thank you.
Um, I think that's all I got.
All right. Uh, so we're on the comments from the public. Mr. Vernon, your number one, please.
Just a few items. Uh, number one, I'm anxious for a status. Original request to change the zoning code, making self storage units a prohibited use. Haven't had me, I didn't make it to the last, uh, PNC meeting, but I don't believe it was on the agenda either. Uh, number two, uh, committee assignments were made for the trustee back in May, or might have been June meeting, I don't recall exactly. And, uh, wondering when I was asked to uh, participate on water and sewer, that's fine. Wondering when the trigger's gonna be pulled for committees to meet. And last item, I'm curious, uh, status, uh, at the end of the last, towards the end of the last meeting, last just about down to the last minutes, uh, last meeting, there was a motion seconded, voted for an RFP draft. And that was to be for tonight's meeting, I was rather anxious to find out where that was.
All right, thank you. Uh, Christine, please.
Hello, I just wanted to thank everyone that's been, um, showing up to the markets, helping with the markets, uh, putting signs of a lot of communication, um, our next one is a move to the seventh, uh, which will catch, hopefully catch people before they go to, uh, heritage dress. Uh, but if you know anyone that would like to be a vendor, uh, we are still taking applications, uh, and if you might be interested in purchase, just come on down, at least, and stop by and see, um, the vendors, we have kids selling things and stuff like that, so thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I would like to attest, it was really special to see three kids' tables at this last run. Um, and I made a point of mentioning to Siobhan Porter, one of our residents, her girls made stress balls out of flour and balloons, and I told her I'm gonna commission a whole bunch. They're adorable, and it was, yeah, it was, and I got bracelets, or I got earrings from your girls, and then a bracelet from one of the other girls, so it was really fun to see you guys up there, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and number three, we have Agada, oh, Agada, please, and Tom.
Good evening, everyone, we thank you today because, uh, to our ears catch the rumors, then our project bring, uh, Barbara to, uh, a trouble. And we wanna ensure it's not hurtful at all. It's, we have, like I mentioned before, we have a huge problem with, uh, the building and all the planning and this structural status of the building. And actually, what I wanna mention, uh, Barbara, it's very helpful from the beginning. When we came here, and we came in May twenty twenty-two, she guided us from the beginning with all the, uh, application and all the process what the village require. And, uh, from our perspective, she's very helpful. And for any reason, the delay of our project is absolutely not hurtful. So we, we're dealing with the structural problem, with, uh, changing the architects and, uh, all the huge team, and we have huge team working on this project. So it's taking time, we all frustrated by this, but we trying the best. But, uh, I don't think so. She is just executor of the law with the village, it's, so it's just our opinion, our, uh, our, uh, what we dealing with Barbara, but it's nothing just help from her, nothing else. So we wanna just to clarify this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, just to clarify for your peace of mind, you, you can.
Okay.
Um, we, yes, we understood that there were structural issues, and that there was architect issues, so in no way did anything have to do with your development, and we're all, I think, I can speak for the whole village, we're all looking forward to your progress and getting to taste all of your delicious foods. We're all salivating. Thank you.
Please.
Um, do you have like a date in mind of when?
Actually, sitting here, we just received the email from the structural engineer, so we're waiting for the calculation with its number, I don't know, fifty or, uh, wherever, then all, uh, calculation what we did before, it wasn't working with our project, so they can try and find, uh, solution.
Okay.
Uh, so we will see, I don't know if the final calculations working with our, uh, layout project. Maybe finally we can.
Start moving.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Take breath, get situated, hopefully we can maybe update in September, yes.
I hope so.
I'll reach out to you. Thank you. Thank you for coming in, we appreciate that. All right, public comments, anybody else who came in at some point, any comments? Uh, trustee reports, roads, parks, and streets, trustee Canelli, please.
Uh, yes. Colin, we may need you to, uh, assist me with this audit of the playground. But, um, also I need a little clarification, because if there's any need to spend about seventeen hundred and fifty dollars at that park, is it, I'm assuming that this is, would have to be an agenda item, because we'd have to vote on it, correct?
It is, yeah, why don't we just, yeah, let's, there's some resources we have, it's not on tonight's agenda.
Correct.
But yeah, I think you, Kyle, and I can sit down, we have some other options to maybe not having to spend that money, so let's fight it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, we'll, I'll let it go at that.
So what he's discussing is seventeen apart, we've seen some areas that need to be uh, correct, not corrected, um, updated, and we're looking at some options, so we're not spending village money, and we will get back to that. So I backed him up just over this weekend.
Okay. Um, yeah, that's the only thing that, uh, that I have to report.
Yeah. Uh, finance report, trustee Hoff.
Yes, uh, last Tuesday, I had a, uh, meeting with Jeff Steele, our engineer, to review, um, try to get our arms around what it would cost for us as a village to replace water mains. And so I probably spent two hours with him, packed up all my notes, I'm ready to meet with you this week to review it, and then also I need to do some due diligence with Eugene, um, where all of our breaks have occurred, just to make sure we're replacing the ones that are mostly, I think we're pretty sure of where it's gonna be, but uh, we just wanna see it in black and white as well.
And our main focus on that was the original notion of hill, the length of hill crest generally, and then also now we're looking at windward with these recent breaks, is that correct? Okay.
Those are the two.
Is it? Well, we'll be about it later, but yeah, I'm curious if we can break it up, if it's a whole project, or we'll break it up into separate, so.
It should have more information for the next meeting.
So, thank you. All right, finance, uh, water and sewer, the trustee McGuire, she's not here this evening. Kyle, can I confirm, we haven't had any water main breaks, everything's been good these past two weeks.
And why?
Uh, police and public safety, I'm just gonna note, I had a great meeting with trustee Diatley earlier this week, where we got to discuss police issues and work on the coming, upcoming committees, so.
Yeah, a lot of good things coming down the pipe on that, um, I don't have anything personally, chief, do you have anything to?
Just briefly, and, and I'm gonna write up actually a formal accommodation, but one of our officers, officer Tolchak, um, responded to uh, a subject that, uh, appeared to be in distress in his vehicle. Uh, gentleman was driving himself to the urgent care. Officer Tolchak actually, rather than just sending him on his way, actually followed the person all the way to the, um, urgent care to make sure that he got there okay. Um, and that person reached out to me, let me know how appreciative he was of the officer doing it. And anytime we get phone calls like that, I like to bring it to everybody's attention, because those are the extra steps that our, our officers are taking pretty much every day, uh, to deliver services. But I'll be giving him a formal accommodation, um, writing it up, and then I'll, I'll, I'll have it for the board for the next meeting, I will not be here, but Sergeant Dury will be, and he will present it to him.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, again, I'm gonna mention, actually, Mr. Vernon, in response to your comment earlier about water and sewage, uh, we still need many members for water and sewage, so following that report, uh, we need more members who are interested in water and sewage, anybody who's on wells, this would be a good fit for you, anybody who's on sewer, we'd like your feedback. Um, anybody who has plumbing experience, that can offer some insight, that would be great, so once we get enough members and can form our committee, then we can start meeting. Likewise, for police and safety, we're up to almost three members, we need at least one more to get that committee going. So if anybody has an interest in public safety, please let us know. Thank you. Um, buildings and environment, trustee Schatzberger.
Uh, I have no report, just waiting to get together with you and the, that couple of the committee members to go forward on our next project.
Yeah, we have a couple of good meetings coming up for the environment with, uh, Dundee Township, that open spaces that we're gonna work with, hopefully, and see if we can collaborate something, so it's not just the residents, but also I'm gonna reach out to residents who have offered to volunteer. This fall is when we're really gonna look to maybe start taking down some invasives. Not on private property, folks, not on residents, we're gonna do village property first, so we can see how it happens. I don't wanna scare or frustrate anybody, but we'll have a more thorough plan come early September, once we got that one planned out. And if anybody wants to help volunteer and cut things down, it's fun. It'll be September, October, November. All right, and building and zoning, trustee Thomas.
No report tonight.
All right, uh, discussion and approval, uh, sorry, old business, discussion and approval of the ordinance adopting regulations governing the operation of mobile food vendors in the village. After our last meeting, attorney Schuster took some of our, uh, questions and concerns, applied them to the draft that we already had. Uh, I hope you guys have had a chance to read through it. As you'll notice, he changed the definition of mobile food vendor. Also, we included that, uh, notation to make sure that they're attributing to the sales tax in the village. We set it at five tru, five food trucks for a public, excuse me, for locations on public property, two if it's private property, and then block parties can have a special stipulation within their application for their permits. Uh, additionally, so we said ten AM to sunset. There was some discussion about timing, and he and I had a further discussion, thinking that that actually made the most sense, Since we just didn't want people running out in dusk or dark time, running across streets to places. Thank you for that, please. Um, uh, also he accommodated the, if we had a long weekend, since we're giving people three days over a seven day week, if it's a long weekend, we'd offer four days, they could have that Friday through Monday, and allowed for block parties. And that's pretty much it. Did anybody else, did anybody have any comments? Or actually, do I have a motion to approve?
I have one question.
Can we get to the motion till we can get to discussion?
Yes.
So.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Penelly's, seconded by Thomas. Any comments, questions, or discussion, trustee Thomas?
I was at a service club meeting the other night and there was, they're talking about making potentially some changes to some of the scheduling and stuff like that. And the, um, thing with the food trucks came up. And they wanted to, you know, I told them that we were looking at five food trucks. And if they want to add additional food trucks to any of their, their events, would they need to do, ask for a special variance or change, I mean, and these are just discussions, ideas, but is there a way, since we have five in there, that they should potentially increase that without, or would, like, I'm just trying to see to give them some feedback.
Oh. Mr. Florence, can I speak to you as a service club representative?
Sure.
Uh, do you, are you guys looking, do you think that you guys would want any more than five at this year's Halloween event?
Um, definitely not at Halloween. Really, the only time we've had more than five. Special events, special occurrences, like events where we didn't wanna be serving food ourselves.
Okay, so if we have another emergency, we can this, so our idea is we're gonna, this is our pilot program, just get through the summer, get through the summer, up through Halloween's bonfire, and kind of get this feel out for that, uh, the market in Halloween in September. So some vendors can come for that, as well as then for the Halloween. Do you think two and five will be sufficient just to get through this season and then we can readdress it with? Because they were more talking about it for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it'd be okay, it'd be, if we discussed it for next year, that would be.
Next year.
If we were gonna do more than five, it would be a different format. So we would start from the beginning and
Right.
present that.
We did have some things in here that had to do with special stipulations for village sanctioned or village approved special events. I'm imagining, and I will confirm with attorney Schuster, that that was an idea of the service club and the big events. So you guys can do different times, like past, past sunset. So for the Fourth of July and the fireworks, you'll be able to have other things. Uh, I imagine there'd be some flexibility, but I am not a practicing attorney sitting right here, so I'm not going to say that definitively. I think we could pass it as it is and then address those issues for next season, if that's okay?
Yeah, I think the only question the club would have is that, you know, we do have ice cream vendors after dark. Do they, well, are they considered food trucks?
Uh, well, you are allowed to go beyond sunset if you request it in your permit as service club. The way that it's written under F one, the licensee shall be permitted to sell food products between the hours of ten AM and sunset, except if otherwise may be permitted by the village administrator, Mr. Van, or for a village sponsored or village approved special event. I think we wrote that in there with service club events in mind, knowing that sometimes there's evening or after dusk affairs.
Okay.
So, um, do you anticipate saying absolutely no to them on Halloween?
I have a feeling I'd be part of the bonfire if I did.
So from that standpoint, are we good with the two and five right now?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, any other comments, questions, concerns? All right, hearing none, um. It's not a financial one, so would, uh, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All affirmative, no negative, motion passes. Actually, I take that back. Let's do a roll call because this is an ordinance, it's a regulation. Thank you. Trustee Diatley.
Aye.
Trustee Thomas.
Aye.
Trustee Schatzberger.
Aye.
Trustee Penelly.
Aye.
Trustee Mark.
Aye.
All right, all affirmative, no negative. Thank you, motion passes. I'll get that forwarded to Mark and we'll get that taken care of. And, all right, so on to new business. Uh, under A, we have discussion and approval of a motion to approve the fire hydrant replacements. The fire hydrant replacement projects are gonna come out of the general fund maintenance utility system, and they're gonna be applied in Saddle Club on Hilltop, uh, two oh one, two oh three, two oh seven, two eleven, and two fifteen. It essentially goes from Hilltop Court along Hilltop Lane up to, I can never remember the name of that court. It's not Windmore, but it's that one long court.
Wind, I think it's Windcrest.
Ring West, thank you, yes. Uh, so this one, Kyle, did you wanna speak to the services that they'd be providing and why we're going with?
Uh, yeah, um, some, some of the board members that were on the board last year, I remember, and the new ones, um, last year I started to do a fire hydrant replacement program uh, to replace some of the fire hydrants that are forty to fifty years old. That's the average span of a fire hydrant, a well-maintained fire hydrant. Um, the ones in Saddle Club, I'm trying to get rid of all the Eddy hydrants. Those are the oldest ones. Uh, most of the town uses watchers hydrants. It's a personal preference with different people that work on them, but since we have most watcherses, I know how to use a watchers. I like watcherses. Um, Eddie's, in my opinion, open and closed too fast, creating potential for uh, issues in our water mains. So I started doing it last year. I wanna try to do, you know, budget permitting every year. I'm gonna try to do five a year until we get up to date on our fire hydrants instead of them.
Do I have a motion? A motion to approve the fire hydrant replacement program for the five houses on Hilltop in Saddle Club for five watchers fire hydrants from Ferguson Water Works at six thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars and eighty-three cents each, which totals thirty-two thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars and fifteen cents. This is a two-part, is it another part? Then there's also the approval of water services to install those hydrants. Also at six thousand nine hundred eighty dollars per hydrant. So we're looking at about fifteen thousand per hydrant?
Uh, yeah.
Fourteen thousand per hydrant?
Yeah.
And that totals thirty-four thousand nine hundred dollars. So the total project to replace five hydrants is sixty-seven thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars and fifteen cents. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Diatley.
Do you have a second?
Second, Schatzberger.
Comments, questions, discussion?
A quick question, is the, so it, has this been put into the budget, was worked out in the?
Yes, yeah, yes.
Yeah, this is in the budget. Kyle, as Kyle said, I've been on the board before, but so we've done, he started doing this so many each year, which is, in my opinion, very smart to do. That way it doesn't catch us where we have to do twenty any. Um, it, it moves to the ongoing, getting everything to one system where it's easier to work with. Um, and it also, uh, you know, insurance companies love when there's new fire hydrants and you can tell them that while you're, uh, when you try to get into better prices on your insurance. Um, so it's a maintenance thing. I think it's well worth it and I like the approach that Kyle's taking.
I also will indicate, uh, there have been questions about us going out for RFPs. I'd just like to mention, uh, in this instance, typically you do need RFPs when it goes over a certain dollar amount. Uh, we can over, we can bypass that with a two-thirds vote of the board for ongoing necessities for the village. This is something that we have done in the past. So that is something to keep in mind with your votes. Um, and other comments?
Kyle, what did we pay last year for the five?
Uh, they're, they're about a thousand dollars more this year for hydrant than last year. The labor is the same, but the hydrants themselves went up about a grand.
Okay. And so you left, obviously shut the water off and then there will be a boil order for X number of days, the words end.
Yeah, I'll, if it gets approved, I'll schedule with the contractor. I'll send out notification letters to the the block that's gonna be shut off, because it'll probably be a two-day project. So we'll, you know, we'll have a boil order in fact until we're done with the project. Plus, once I get a, I take a bacteria sample, once the lab gives me the okay to lift the order, that's when we lift the boiler. But there will be plenty of notification before we even touch the water main.
So a two-day project, but the water would be turned back on.
Oh, water will be turned back on each day, yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I should have asked you this earlier when we talked about this, as a former water and sewage trustee, um, we had that water main break right, just a little bit down on Hilltop earlier, well, last January, that affected all of Hilltop, including these houses. Does this have anything to do with the going through those water mains and the catch that you had to do or just?
No, uh, the, the reason that Hilltop had went for so many houses during that main break was we had a valve that we could not locate because it was under fifteen inches of snow. And we couldn't find it at two AM.
All right.
That's why. We found the valve, it's now marked on the map.
GPS, all right. All right, so we had Diatley moved, Schatzberger seconded. Any further comments, questions, please?
Kyle, are they gonna do one per day?
No, probably do three, three one day and two the next day.
Can I, from what I recall last time, I would only request that we try to start on a Monday. So when they get done, that the lab is open, because I don't think it was open over the weekend when last time that happened in my area. You'd have to wait a little extra, well, boil order was.
No, that was for, that was for main.
Okay.
Yeah, that was for the main break. The lab's open Monday through Friday until five PM. That's not an issue.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Now, any further comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, uh, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Hoff.
Aye.
Trustee Penelly.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Thomas.
Aye.
And trustee Diatley.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. It beat the two thirds, so all affirmative, no negative, motion passes. Thank you, folks. All right, moving on to the second item, discussion and approval of a motion to approve the water system sample stations that will come out of the general fund, three zero dash seven zero dash seventy-two dash four one two zero maintenance equipment, totaling a fourteen thousand three hundred fifty-four dollars. It would be purchasing two sampling stations from the water products company totaling thirty-three thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars, as well as there's water services, services to install both of the stations totaling ten thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Penelly, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Thomas. Comments, questions, discussion?
Where are these stations?
So these are bacteria sample stations. I do monthly bacteria sample stations every, every, bacteria samples every month. Um, two of the locations went from being in people's houses and then COVID hit and someone didn't want me in the house. So then I had to start pulling from the fire hydrant, which you can do, you have to flush a lot of water and if you get a negative sample, it's, it's a whole pain in the butt. You have to sample upstream, downstream, that source again. And then if it gets another negative sample, then the alarm's ringing and we got major issues, all because of pulling from a fire hydrant. So uh, these would eliminate that. These would be a tap into the main, basically like your, your service line into your house would be a one inch, uh, line. And it looks like a little AT&amp;T box with a little spigot that is frost proof and all that. So it's, you can use it year round. So it would eliminate pulling from a hydrant, maintaining good integrity, bacteria samples.
You know where you're gonna put them?
Yeah, uh, timber on the cord and then on lower cord.
We get both sides of it.
Yeah, those, those are the sites, the EPA, um, you can always change your sample sites to a degree, but the EPA has their permit and those have been, they want those sites just based on where they are located in our, our total system.
Anybody else? All right, hearing none, further discussion, uh, roll call vote, please. Trustee Thomas.
Aye.
Trustee Diatley.
Aye.
Trustee Schatzberger.
Aye.
Trustee Hoff.
Aye.
Trustee Penelly.
Aye.
All affirmative, no negatives, motion passes. Thank you, everybody. Moving on to item C, streets and highways, draw this out so we can get past the rain. Uh, discussion and approval of motion to purchase a twenty twenty-six Ford F four fifty dump truck with snow plow. This is part of the five-year capital improvement fund, seventeen dash fifty-four dash eighty-six dash fifty-nine thirty under vehicles. And this is to approve and accept the Linco equipment sales. Linco?
Linco, yeah.
Uh, but which, oh, which is by Sourcewell, which is a government.
It's a, yeah, government awarded, Linco got the Sourcewell awarded contract. Meaning that Sourcewell, instead of us having to get three bids, they do all the bidding nationwide through every, for every municipality, every single piece of equipment. So they got the lowest bid. That's what Sourcewell is.
And that is, so I'm looking for a, thank you, looking for a motion to accept the Linco equipment sales bid awarded by Sourcewell to purchase a twenty twenty-six Ford F four fifty dump truck with snow plow package for one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, one hundred eighteen thousand four hundred twenty-eight dollars. Additionally, the Ford F, F four fifty chassis, fifty-seven thousand nine dollars. The stainless steel dump truck or dump box, hydraulics, salt spreader, and snow plow at sixty-one thousand four hundred nineteen dollars. So the total request, oh, sorry, going back to the total request being one hundred eighteen thousand four hundred twenty-eight dollars. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Diatley.
Second.
Moved by Diatley, seconded by Schatzberger. Any comments, questions, discussion? So Kyle, this is replacing.
This is, this would replace the two thousand two Ford F four bit, right?
Uh, I did ask him about a few months ago when there was an open house over there, we were discussing the, the plow and the truck because we just approved one on the board in the past year. The one that we approved this last year, I had asked, do we need to replace everything or could we just replace the, the, the box part, which is where you have most of the salt? That one we could. This one you said is about twenty-five years old, like the whole thing needs to be replaced?
Yeah, but I, if you guys saw the timeline on these, um, it could be two hundred days just for the chassis to get to the factory and then that's another twenty-four months for it to be built with the box and the, all of that. The one before was to place, replace an international dump truck, which is our big salt trucks and based on, you can always replace the box, yes. Based on the condition of that, the year of it, it wasn't worth just replacing the box. Now with these, they're stainless steel boxes, so they will hold up and last a whole lot longer than the regular steel that we have used in the past.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, uh, we can have a roll call vote, please. Trustee Hoff.
Aye.
Trustee Penelly.
Aye.
Trustee Thomas.
Aye.
Trustee Schatzberger.
Aye.
And trustee Diatley.
Aye.
All opposed, no, all in favor, none opposed, motion passes. Do I have any further business from the board? Then there's no more new business. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Diatley, seconded by Thomas. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All as opposed. Meeting is adjourned at eight eleven. It sounds like a downfall out there. Thanks, thank you, everybody.
I would just like to say before anybody leaves, it is, uh, President Bo's birthday today, so happy birthday.
It's like saying, our, our tiny admin, Melissa, who also helps work the cameras sometime instead of John, you know, birthday twins. We're literally the same age today. Our birthday's like almost around the same hour.
So hope yourself. Help yourself, yeah.